Welcome to the St. Peter's School Board regular board meeting, Monday, June 20th, 2022. We are in the governor's room of the St. Peter Community Center in air-conditioned comfort. It is 6:34, and I call this meeting to order. If we could rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would consider a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda, and past practice is we don't read all of these into the record, but they are available in the back of the room in a copy. If any board member has anything that they have questions about or want to pull off to talk about separately, that's totally, totally great.
Ben, I would like to talk about you.
Me?
No, you.
Okay. Either one's fine.
Wow, that's really clever.
Do you want to talk about it, and then, or do you want to?
I have questions about the leave.
Okay, let's talk about item U.
Because it just simply states a leave of absence, and it doesn't say what article of the master agreement this leave is granted under. It doesn't say how long the leave is, if it's for a year, or when it starts, when it ends. So, that's what I was wanting.
It's an FMLA leave.
Okay, for 12 weeks then, or?
It, well, would be 12 weeks paid, and then it could be extended as unpaid.
Assuming that the individual qualifies for FML leave and has 12 weeks of paid leave, then he can substitute.
Yep.
Okay.
The plan is one semester currently.
Thank you. Good question. Any other questions or items?
Chairman Leonard, I was down. Talked to Mr. Regner a couple times this week, so all things look good.
Hearing no other discussion, is there a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we have the student spotlight. So, Principal Sakura.
Good evening. So, I am very proud that Carla Torres is here with us tonight as our spotlight student. Carla just finished her first year at Rock Bend ALC, but she's been, you've been in St. Peter's schools your whole schooling, right?
Yep.
Yes, so she just did her first year with us, so she will be entering her senior year. And I told Carla that I was recognizing her for a number of reasons. First of all, she is very engaged and participates in the class, always chattering, very positive, and she has done an incredible job earning credits. So, when she came in with us, you were a little behind.
Yep.
And it was like a COVID thing, because you had COVID ninth and 10th grade year. That was your experience.
Yep.
So, when she came in, she became very serious about school. And last year, she earned 11 credits, which at the traditional high school, students typically earn seven. So, that just is kind of a testament and evidence to how hard she worked. She also did two year, or two credits in summer school, the summer before, and almost two credits in ABE. So, she did about two years of schooling in a year, just really worked hard. So, she's awesome. But, you have some guests here, so let's recognize who they are, because they've been supporting you. So, who'd you bring?
So, my mom is not here, because she's in Texas, but she's really big. But, I have my dad, my cousin Salali, my best friend, then my brother's girlfriend, Ruby, then my brother, then my boyfriend, Juan.
Okay. So, Carla's got a great support system, which is also evident at school. So, I've got some questions, Carla. We're going to make you tell us about yourself.
Awesome.
So, what is your favorite subject, or what do you like about school?
Subject, English, school. I just, I like everything in general about school. I like just getting away from home and just being able to be at school.
Be with your friends.
Yeah.
And then tell us about your job, because that's been a huge part of your credit recovery process.
So, I work at Kids Corner, which is just downstairs. I've been working there since I was 16, and I think there I found my path on what I want to do for my future.
So, tell us more about that.
So, I'm deciding not to go to college, and I'm just going to take some courses and slowly work my way up into becoming an assistant teacher, and then soon to be a head teacher.
So, you said not college, but you're going to take classes.
Yep.
That's still college.
In a way, yeah. Yeah, just not paying for it.
All at the same time. That's just fine.
Smart.
Yeah. So, is there anything else you want to share with us?
I mean, no, besides that. I did work a lot. So, I mean, I took a lot of tears to get here.
Uh-huh.
So, I'm super excited for graduating next year, because I'm just kind of over high school and want to be done with it.
Also fair.
Anything else you want to ask Carla?
No.
She's not shy. She acts shy, but she's not shy.
I'm not.
What's your favorite age group at Kids Corner to work with?
Toddlers, so one to two. They're my favorite. They're learning. They're like little sponges absorbing everything you teach them. They're what's not to love. They're sticky. They're all sticky and gross. Love that. They leave your boogers on you. Love it.
They're sponges that way, too.
Agree.
Well, I just want to say congrats to you, because getting behind is really, really hard.
Oh, yeah.
And that's amazing that you're able to catch up. Now, are you going to be graduating, or is that the plan? Are you kind of on track now to graduate?
She's on track. She didn't even need summer school this year.
That's a big deal. That is a big deal.
It is a really big deal, because it's my first time not going to summer school since, like, first grade.
That's what kids do in June, right?
Yep.
That's awesome.
Yep, I'm really proud of her.
Yeah.
That is great.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Carla, thank you. Carla's family, thank you.
Thank you all.
Now you can go.
I mean, you can stay, but you're not required.
You don't have to. There's no credit attached.
Yeah.
No extra credit.
Number 10 is also a question.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congra- thank you.
Well, that moves us into action items. So, to continue, it's a good transition to considering approval of candidates for graduation.
Yeah, that was a great segue. As you know, this particular class of 2022 had quite a ride during their four years at St. Peter High School, and the students' names in front of you met all of the requirements of, from the state of Minnesota and the St. Peter School Board as well, which, as you know, is significantly above the Minnesota requirements. So, congratulations to those kids. The other thing of note is that every single one of those kids who crossed the stage on the 27th actually had earned their diploma in time. St. Peter doesn't have a practice of allowing those who are going to finish over the summer to walk at graduation, so they are all officially graduates of St. Peter High School.
Fantastic.
And thank you, those of you who were there that night. It was great, great ceremony.
I move to.
Not official, we have to.
I have to. I'll move that we accept the approval for the candidates' graduation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another fun agenda item, consider approval of tenure action for probationary teachers.
Yes, we have. We are excited to present quite a long list of people. Is it on?
I don't know.
My light's on.
Is it? Okay. Sorry. Don't be done.
It's all right. Quite a long list of people who have earned their tenure status, so that means that they have either three years with us, or three years in another district, and one year with us. And it is a much longer list than usual, and that is evidence of kind of turnover of staff and a lot of fresh faces over the last three years. So, there you go.
Would anyone like to offer a motion?
I move that we accept the tenure action for probationary teachers.
Excellent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Action item number three, consider policies for a single reading due to immaterial changes.
Yes, thank you. I believe we just have one this time. This, this process is when, the only thing that's changing, pretty much, is the number of the policy. So, because we're switching to the MSBA numbering system, this Policy 702 Accounting is getting a new number. It used to be 00414. Very exciting stuff.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
That policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number four, consider second reading of revisions to the policy manual.
These are policies that were brought to you last month for a first reading. We did not receive any feedback or notes, at least I did not.
Nope, did not.
I believe there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 policies coming in, deletion of two existing policies, and we have, or three, sorry, three existing policies, and that should be the 300 and 400 section completed.
Fantastic. Any initial discussion, questions? Hearing none, anyone want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the second reading revisions to the policy manual.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This one might take a little bit longer.
This is.
Approval, consider approval of the 2022-2023 budget.
I'll try and be shorter tonight than I was at the finance committee meeting. I know it's a lot going on, but it's fairly, fairly complicated. I guess maybe I'll just kind of jump right into it, and Bill, if you've got any comments, you know, or questions, just ask. But, like I said, it, I'll try and give a good overview of everything. If any of us have questions, ask. Like I said, we did go over this fairly lengthy at the business committee meeting last week, and, you know, as we get into it, you'll see why. Basically, there should be about, I think, seven, eight pages. The first is basically just a cover sheet outlining what's there. Maybe the easiest thing to do, you know, I kind of like to do is, on the second sheet, is kind of an outline of all the funds, and maybe if we start from the bottom up, it's probably the easier funds to explain and take less time. And then we'll get to the general fund, which is really the meat of our budget, obviously. So, if you flip over to the second page, maybe just start on line 68. Basically, the trust fund, that's just two scholarship funds that people have given us, the Anexed and Mauer Fund. Basically, it's money in, money out for the things. The scholarship fund, they're separated from other scholarship funds in that we have controlling documents that tell us exactly how to spend the funds. Line 60, 61, and 62 were what was, oh, wait, excuse me, sorry, line 64, debt redemption. That's basically just the fund that, the money from the levy for the bond that passed, you know, four or five years ago, the, you know, there's a little bit of fund balance in there, and basically the revenues is the levy, the expenditures is the payment on the bond, and they're always real similar to each other, because they even out with the over levy, and the people don't pay their taxes. But, we've, I think, I've looked back, and I think we've had like 99% collection plus over the years here, so it's been real good. This will probably change this year a little bit, do, actually a lot, due to the refunding. If you remember, was that back in January, February, when we sold, you know, approximately $50 million in, or borrowed, actually, $50 million to pay off the original bond that was sold. We can't pay off the original bond until, I think it's March of 2025, so that money is invested at this point, and the interest on the investment is going to make that payment for the next two or three years. And then it will take, actually, the mechanics of it is, we'll take those funds, pay off the old bond, and then the levy going forward will pay off the loan. So, these numbers will dramatically increase the next time you see this. I'm working with our accountants to get it right, because it's, it's a lot of money. So, but that's kind of the mechanics of it. You know, I guess if any of you follow the financial markets or interest rates over the last probably month, month and a half, you know, I think, Bill, I mean, I think, what, we ended up saving 7 to 8 million dollars?
Yeah.
There would be no savings now, probably, in, with inflation where it's at, probably not for the foreseeable future. So, it's a good thing that you guys did what you did. So, if we hop up to line 60, 60, 61, 62, actually, the 61 has to do with the bond referendum. We finally are going to, with the, with the, with the project up at the school, the concession stand and the restrooms will use up the last of the bond money in FY '22. So, FY '23 or next year, there should be zeros in there, as well as, for those who've been on the board a long time, remember the capital projects fund. We had about $4,000 or $5,000 left on that going into '21. That'll be spent up. So, those funds are gone on both of them, and the projects are complete. There's a real little bit of work that some contractors are supposed to finish up at the high school. It's a couple thousand dollars. If they do come back and finish it, we'll pay it out of general fund money. So, we just, we got to get that fund closed out. We jump up to line 57, the community service fund. That one is one that, that, lack of a better word, is struggling also. I guess maybe I'm going to back up one, one step. Column C is the projected fund balances at the end of FY '22 or June, effective June 30th, when we get there. That's what you would have seen last month in the revised budget. And again, those numbers could change somewhat depending upon how the final audit comes out. So, we're projected to have a negative fund balance in community service fund. You know, that goes back to COVID, and a couple items there that we've talked about. You know, before COVID, we had probably a pretty good fund balance in the community fund, actually. And then with COVID, obviously, we haven't had, been able to have a lot of the classes on that side. And then we also, the state has cut back on scholarships for the school readiness and some of the early learning programs, and that's made a significant difference. So, that's one that we really need to take a closer look at after this year, you know, after '23, and, and either, you know, increased revenues. We've got some ideas for increasing some revenue, and, you know, maybe look at the expenses on that one, too. But, that's, that's definitely at some point, if it stays negative, the general fund has to cover that also. So, food service, that's probably the shining one, line 54. That basically has to do with probably the, the free meals, actually, for the couple of years, you know, because we got paid for them all. We got paid a little bit more, and everybody ate at school, you know, both lunch and breakfasts. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a dual-edged sword, and we'll kind of talk about that a little bit more. We're probably up $300,000, $500,000 in the food service fund due to that over the last years. That money has to stay in food service, or at least a good share of it. We can, we allocate as much out as we can to the general fund. That meets the requirements. But, as we talked about a little bit, that's probably up that, and that's about what our compensatory income is down to. Our revenue's down because, and again, it's one of our hopes, and we got to get the word out, and any help you guys can do is, on the free and reduced lunch applications, just to get everybody to complete them, because there's, there's so much more than just the free lunch on that. You know, that obviously helps, too, but the compensatory revenue and title and everything is tied to that. And with the last couple of years of, you know, the bunches not costing anything, it's been difficult to get people to complete them. We've tried, you know, we've tried a lot of different things. You know, and trying to have a meeting today, again, with a lot of business managers on closing out this year, and everybody's in the same boat. I don't know how much the state was down in lost compensatory revenue, because everybody's percentages is down, and it's based upon the percentages that get approved there. So, kind of in a nutshell, on food service, that's looking good. That's part of the reason, I think, that we, if you remember, we were going to our own food service, because we're required to spend, we're required to spend a lot of that money, and the hope is that we can spend some of it on food and salaries. We put in some extra equipment last year, and we had extra funds, but that, every year, when we get the audit done, we'll have to have to come up with a really firm plan on how to spend the excess above three months. So, that's, that's basically Lines, line 45 is the LTFM. That's Long Term Facilities Management Maintenance, I guess. Basically, that's a program they started, you know, a few years back. It's actually a really good program. It gives us extra dollars to do, to repair buildings or update parking lots. That's what's going on right now over at the middle school. You can deficit spend in it or get built ahead. We are negative after, projected after last year. It's actually a lot less than we had originally done about two, three years ago, because during COVID, we didn't probably spend as much money. So, it's projected to go back a little bit, and that's kind of in line with the plan. In July, you'll be asked to update the 10-year plan again, kind of roll it every year. That's, that's a thing you'll see. So, I'll be working with, with Mr. Bachman and, and the new facilities manager to get that updated in July. So, line 46 is operating capital. That's kind of an item that's kept separate. It's for, you know, I guess in the old days, it would have been for books and furniture. In today's days, it's more for, for capital things, you know. It can be for electronic or physical things that go with learning or curriculum review. That's where we pay for, for a lot of those items. If you see there, and also, is a lot of technology out of there. If you look into transfer there, the $140,000 is something we've typically done the last few years to, from the general fund to the operating capital fund. A couple things that'll happen later tonight is, we always take out a lease for the one-to-one project, which is basically giving a device to all the ninth graders, and we typically borrow the money that goes back probably 10-plus years, and then we've got like four leases going, and we make the payments on it. That helps make the payment on us, transfer from, from the general fund. I think at the time this was set up, the capital couldn't probably handle that, so that, that's why the general fund has helped pay it. So, that's one thing we can, we can look at when we get, get further onto that. The operating capital project asset has a fund balance going, or has, has money set aside into that. So, that's what I call probably the, the other funds above O1. I guess, I know I threw them relatively quick. Any questions on, on those, and then we'll get into the, to the general fund. Maybe to start with the general fund, if you would all flip to the last page, that's, that's the driver of the whole general fund, especially under, I guess, on the revenue side. It's our enrollment projections. Basically, if you look in column, it's got some historical numbers there, but if you look in column AF, that was the actual, the seats at the end of this year, and if you compare that, compare that to roll, the roll next door to column, you know, this year we ended with about 2,200, you know, Waddams. That's basically weighted. We get paid a little bit extra for the 7th through 12th graders. It's a 1.2. But, you can see, we're down, you know, and it kind, this year's is kind of a little bit of an estimate, and it's a rolling thing, and they, they average that, but we're down about 100, 100 students, 100 weighted average. That's, you know, almost $7,000 a kid on those, just from the, the thing. So, that's the big driver of the revenue. Next year, this year, we had a smaller graduating class than a lot of the other classes in the high school. So, actually, next year, we're projected to be up a few students. Typically, with enrollment, we kind of just roll the, the number, we end first grade, that's what we put in second grade, and we bring, we make an estimate on the kindergarten class. Enrollment's been fairly strong. We've had been using 145, but the numbers are a little higher, so we put 150 in for a slight, slight increase in, in that. And then we always pick up, it seems like, a few kids when they, they, from JI or the Lutheran School. This year, it might not be quite so many, because I think they're adding a couple of classes at the Catholic school. But, overall, we're projected to be up a few students for the year. So, you know, that's a good thing for this year. But, one thing, if you want to notice, if you look at lines 26 through, through 30, you know, in any of those years, where we're at right now, those are our largest classes that are going to start to graduate. You know, we typically do pick up some kids there, but if we don't have growth from people moving in, we'll be smaller, just by, by kids graduating, unless the, unless the kindergarten classes pick up to 160, 70 kids. So, keep that in mind for years going forward.
And that's not specifically a St. Peter problem, right?
No.
I mean, that's demographically.
Yeah.
Everywhere.
Yeah.
That age group is starting to shrink.
And there's a couple of things, too, you know, interesting. For those of you that have been around St. Peter a long time, you know, like, the graduating classes a couple of years ago were really small, and that was because of, you know, 19 years after the tornado. And there's one class in here that's small, and it's small all over because of the economic crisis, you know, back in 2009, eight, nine, because people didn't have as many kids. So, but it is, it is, there is an interesting thing, how the Democrats work into that, and we're, we're probably right in there, because a lot of the kindergarten classes, and then you throw in the last couple of years with COVID, the kindergarten classes have been small, too, for, you know, various reasons. And that, that's not just here. And actually, if you hear, you know, and I know you can get that later, the enrollment's down pretty much in the state of Minnesota considerably. And, you know, it's just, that's where the numbers are at. So, I guess I'm going fairly quick here, but if you want to go back to the second page then, and we'll maybe just start on line 37 and work our way up. Miscellaneous scholarships, those are scholarships that people have given to the school that, they don't really have a controlling document, but we give them, we kind of, they might give 20,000 over 10 years or something, so it's money that will pay out over scholarships over the period of time. Concessions, basically, we pretty much just try and break even on the concession stand with the Booster Club, working a lot of the hours there and things. Lines 30 through 33 are the student activity funds. Couple of years ago, they made us break those out, so that the, basically, a lot of school boards around the state, and it wasn't us. We're using those funds as part of their unassigned funds. Basically, it's money the student raised, and we, what they raise, they spend. Reserve for A&amp;I, that'll be gone after last year. That's the Achievement Integration Program. Dental Reserve, line 26, I'll spend just a little bit of time on that. If you know, the last, we, we've been self-insured for dental insurance since before I've been here, it's 10, probably 10, 20 years, and that's the amount that's been above, the, the revenue has been above claims. We kind of pay ourselves. If you remember, we went to self-insurance for the health insurance this last year. We'll, we'll have a new line there in 20, after '22 is over. You know, hopefully, it'll be a, be a, be a nice number. We're running fairly well with our health insurance claims, and that's why, one reason we're able to keep the health insurance costs down to, an increase of 4%. And that's why we're, one reason we're able to keep the health insurance cost down to an increase of four percent, which was with where inflation, I think, was pretty good. But we'll have a self-insured for health insurance in there to align after this year. Funded depreciation, that was money we set aside a couple of years ago to, um, you know, to try and have some money set aside when the, uh, stuff at the new school wears out. Because we, you know, we've got the LTFM, but we added a school and we added, you know, a lot, a lot of, a lot of items. Assigned for triple A, that's still money, that's money that was donated. You know, the donors on the triple A board, um, down in the, the new school there that, you know, is, is for the arts academics and athletics. Um, aside for water mitigation. Um, if you remember on the west side of the, of the high school property, at some point, there's going to be a tube and some tiling. And I'm not sure exactly what the city's all gonna do, but we're gonna get part of the bill on that. And we're hoping that that's, and it sounds like that's enough to cover our portion of the basically water mitigation. So when the water comes down there, it doesn't flood things out. Signed for pair, that was a donation by, um, former board member Soderland. And that will get a, we did use that up last year and I, I just didn't move it out. So that should be, that'll be zero. Signing for operating the new school, that's the one we've talked about at length. Um, back when the new school opened, we assigned some funds to help with additional expenses. As you remember, last in May, on this year's budget, we moved half it over to help with the budget. Um, and then we're looking at moving the other half over next year. So we'll get a little more details on that later. Assigned for the VIBA trust, that's the money we signed for the retirement plan on the teacher's contract. Signed for severance, that's been here for a number of years. That's for when people come and go, that we have some funds to pay that if there's a large dollar amount, um, instead of having to come out of the budget. The next four or five are basically just what they call categoricals that they give us money for and we have to spend it on certain things. And we had a little bit of carryover and then we have learning development, um, or non-spendables or prepaid expenses or things like that that we just have to carry on the balance sheet. Relatively small. That'll bring us up to the line number ten, which is basically our unassigned fund, which is, you know, obviously if you look at the revenues and expenditures, is, is obviously the bulk of the funds and most of the stuff that we pay. We're projected to have a balance of about four point eight million after this year. The revenues and expenditures, we'll go through on the next four pages, you know, not in depth, but a little bit. But as you can see, the expenditures are projected to be revenues next year. The transfer line is basically money that's gonna get transferred into the unassigned fund from the signed, the eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then basically we're taking money out for the retirement fund and the transfer down for the, um, one-to-one lease. And we're projected with about a four point one fund balance at the end of the year. And again, um, we'll get into the, the next couple of pages. But there's just a lot of moving parts still out there with, with COVID and enrollment. And I know we had a lengthy discussion, um, after the, uh, the, the business meeting the other day. And I'm driving home after the meeting, the first thing I hear on the radio is that the, that, you know, the state supposedly had an agreement and they, they're not going back into special session, it doesn't sound like. So there'll be no extra funding for that. So that was one thing that we're kind of, you know, at least we're hoping for, you know, whether they gave it to us in the cross subsidy or compensatory or something like that. But it sounds like the legislature's not going back in special session. So they won't be back till late, till, you know, probably next winter, I suppose. So that was kind of a hope there. But anyhow, um, we'll spend a little bit of time maybe on page three. And then page four, fi, four, five, and six are relatively just the next years. Actually, page, page four, I guess, is, uh, next year FY twenty-three. We got the, uh, funds of four point eight million at the beginning of the year in the fund balance. Um, on line three ninety-nine, line four oh two is our estimated revenue from, from last year. And then four fifteen is our estimated expenditures. The next few items after line four two are kind of what the major items that are gonna change, that we know are gonna change. We're gonna get line four oh two, we're gonna legislative increase of two percent. You know, enrollment will hopefully be up a little bit next year. Four oh five, and this is one that, that hurts, we're gonna drop another two hundred and thirty-some thousand in compensatory revenue after dropping, it was closer, it was closer to three last year. So we're, we're down over, over five hundred thousand from two years ago. In two thousand twenty-two, we've got about one point seven in COVID funds that we're using. So we're, we're taking that away and we still have about a million dollars of COVID funds, which we're, we're hopefully gonna use up. Again, each one, there's about ten different programs and they each have a little bit different requirements or things that you can use that money for. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure we'll be able to use it all up. That will have qualifying expenses or some, some programs that we just didn't have. They were very, very specific and we didn't have expenses for the monies that were allocated. I did hear today, they may try and reallocate some of that for twenty-three, um, that, that's due after twenty-two. So we'll, we'll just have to see how that goes. Then we, we are getting an extra of approximately five hundred and twenty-one thousand from the referendum that was passed this past year. Um, our sped funding, you know, I'm hoping that it's gonna be up a little bit next year. Um, it typically went up some, there's a little bit of extra cross subsidy aid. So it should be up some and that's the one thing we've always tried to be real conservative on because you, that can really change, uh, with the state tuition billing process. It's, it's really complicated. So that one thing there. And then the eight hundred and thirty-five thousand in and out. So we're hoping to get about just short of thirty million in revenue next year. Um, on the expense side, we start with last year's, we got expenditures increases. Then basically the, um, the, the retirements ins and outs, little bit more expenses at MVET. And then, you know, the COVID, some of that money is COVID, had to be spent on new things. Some of it we can use to supplant things. So between lines, um, four twenty and four twenty-eight, those are kind of offset each other there. This year, as part of the, the budget, we had finished the CSP funds. Those actually didn't come out of the, the unassigned funds. We had those assigned and we moved them back over. Then lines four twenty-three and below that, um, we've had some staff reductions for this year, which will, will save, will be about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in less expenses. We do have a couple of new sped teachers coming on with requirements there, um, for extra costs. We did have a couple of staff that, um, resigned or left mid-year that we didn't replace mid-year that we're replacing, um, that we saved the money on the budget or didn't spend as much. But they will, the replacements will be on at the beginning of the year, so there's an extra cost there. And then, um, staff changes, you know, sometimes we get staff that leave, they break it off with a different level. And we try and, this year so far, it's been fairly close. Um, some years we, we save funds depending on who retires, some years it's a little more expensive. We still have a few more staff members to replace. Um, so that number, number well, will change, um, depending upon who's hired to replace them. The tech initiative, there's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand transferred in. And then line four twenty-nine is kind of an estimate. If you go back to last year's budget, um, one thing that I don't know yet until we're done is we do allocate out as much funds as the general fund. Are we pay the general fund money from food service on some items that utilities and supervision that we really don't know until all the numbers in at the end of the year. So we're hoping to get, you know, get that much money transferred over because of the food service balances fund. And it, it's money the general fund has paid. So when it's all said and done, we're, we're dropping some on the, on the, um, fund balance. And I guess the, the hard thing on that, and then we look forward, it'll really become evident, is we don't, we're putting, besides that, we're putting the funds from the sign money plus the, plus the COVID funds, which were kind of one-time money. If you remember, our old board member said that a lot, it's one-time fund. So it, it, it gets larger the following year because we don't have those funds for revenue. So next year, basically going down a little bit because we have those funds. If you flip over to the next page, it's kind of, I don't want to go through all the numbers, but it's kind of the same thing. Only we don't have the revenue projected from, from COVID, the COVID funds and the assigned funds. So the fund balance drops significantly. And then you go to the following year FY twenty-five, same thing happens. So, you know, the really, the, the big questions for, still open for twenty-three are enrollment. If we can pick some of the enrollment back up that we lost last year. And if the state will come through with any extra funding, whether they want to call it, the, the, you know, the cross subsidy is, is big for us. It's a lot of money, um, you know, or compensatory. You know, we're gonna, you know, we've, we've talked at length about getting the free and reduced applications back up. That would help for, for, it won't help at all for twenty-three, but it'll help for twenty-four, um, and twenty-five in the future. But, um, you know, it, it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of moving, moving parts yet, but the parts are fairly expensive over revenues. Um, like I said, at that meeting today, a person next to me, I turned to him and asked him how their budget was, they just shook their head too. You know, and for most of you that's seen Minneapolis, what they, what they cut here this, last week. And, um, you know, we're not alone, that doesn't make it any easier. But, um, I guess I'll open up the questions. I don't, you know, it's, it's, it's tight, it's negative. You know, if, if the enrollment and stuff doesn't change, you know, we, we, you're just gonna have to make adjustments for, for twenty-four.
I think the only thing I'd add is that, um, going into the fall, we do plan to have a, a big campaign to get as many people. We love if every single family filled out the free and reduced price lunch forms, even if, even if they don't think they're eligible, just to help us all get there. But we'll know what we need to know basically by October, mid-October. We'll know what the free and reduced price lunch numbers are, we'll know what our enrollment is. And that's always a, a year behind. So we, you know, October tells us what the funds for next year will be. So if we need to make significant reductions, we'll know pretty early on in the year if we need to do that. We'll start that process early, um, likely in November and December. Tim and I will be having conversations and then bringing in stakeholders later on. But hopefully, we won't have to do that. But likely we'll have to do at least some.
Probably gonna be a combination just, just where we're at. But, you know, it's, yeah, you've heard me say that, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's a location, location, location in real estate. It's enrollment, enrollment, enrollment. And, you know, we've had a, you know, a real nice increase over the years until this last year, year and a half. And, you know, there's, there's all kinds of factors as we all know. And, uh, like I said, we're not, we're not alone. So, you know, hopefully the state will do something eventually. But I guess at that point, we, we don't know that and we can't, we can't count on it.
So I'd say you projected a two percent increase.
For the following years, yeah.
For the following year.
Yeah.
And that's basically what we had for this year and the previous year, right?
Yeah, actually in, in twenty-two, this year, it was like two point four, five. I don't remember what it was, like it was just less than two and a half, it was a little more. You know, again, that, that's maybe a little more aggressive than we've probably been in the past. It's been two percent since I've been here every year. And the, the, the state does have a surplus. And again, there's, you know, there's a lot of factors going in there too that, um, but I, I guess I was just thinking that if we're not alone, you know, and so, you know, if, if, uh, you know, everybody's gonna be cutting if, if it's zero or one.
Well, and everybody's gonna be asking for that surplus, a portion of that surplus. But I think if we can really, um, pound on the compensatory portion and then the fact that we were only two percent when inflation was whatever it was.
Right.
Now inflation is up to
Eight point six.
Two percent's not gonna cut it. And that's, I think we're gonna have to start, as soon as the election's over, you're gonna have to start pounding on whoever, whoever won.
And that's the other thing, I guess, we didn't get into this too much here, but, you know, the, you know, fuel costs, you know, um, electricity costs, you know, just all the utilities and those we, you know, there's, there's really not, there's not a lot we do about if, if, you know, diesel's at six bucks. You know, we, we need to run the buses, you know, we may, we've got to look probably at the routes and the timings and things. But there's, they gotta travel so many miles and the lights gotta go on. So I mean, that's, you know, seventy, eighty percent of the, the, the expenses are staff salary, their salaries and benefits. There's very little bit besides that.
Well, thank you very much.
Um, we do need to make a motion to approve it so we can spend money next year. Otherwise, otherwise we, we'd save a lot of money, but no.
I move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion. I mean, this is why we have a fund balance. So we're able to not make decisions now because things probably will change.
Yeah, we're probably, you know, the last audit we get done with is, is the strongest we've been since I've been here in ten years. And I know from talking with some of you guys that are a lot, a lot longer than me, you know, there was fund balances of a day and a half.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, you know, we're going into it strong, we built it up for a rainy day and it's pouring, you know, so.
Well, I would suggest as you start massaging numbers in December whatever is at the negotiators meet with you two to prepare. So we have ducks in the row there too.
We don't have a big number in on that either. And that was kind of what we had to keep the fund balance a little bit current because that's, that's a big, that's a big item too, failure.
And you know, you're gonna try and keep it down and they're looking at inflation too and cost of living. And they're gonna be pushing for every penny they can get. So that's gonna be a struggle.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a motion, uh, in a second. I'll call the question. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Action item number six, consider the continuation of a joint agreement with MVET to provide food service. Is this a T V or?
I can, um, we've, you can't. We've had an ongoing agreement with MVET. Uh, they get their meals through our meal service. Obviously, we were with, um, Aviance and now we're going to self operations. But MVET would like to continue to partner with us for us to provide their meals. And so that's what this agreement is.
Anything to add to that, E T V?
Is the cost gonna stay the same or?
The costs haven't been set yet. We get those numbers from the federal government, they tell us what we have to do. We haven't received those changes yet.
It just came out on Friday.
Oh, do they?
Time to get ready.
Okay.
Thursday, Friday, it's all.
Next month.
So this is a second renewal, it says. So regardless of who our provider is, this agreement is with us, no matter who we use.
Right.
So nothing has to change.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Well, right.
Right.
Sure, but I mean, yeah, it's still a, it's an agreement with us, not with, directly with a food service provider. Right.
And the students there would pay the same fees that our students are paying and adults, staff. Prices would be exactly the same.
So we're getting students from other districts, right? In that, so who has to fill out the free and reduced lunch paper?
We were having that conversation the other day.
Actually, I, I talked with, with MVET today. They, they fill them out there and I talked to them that we gotta help them in with our, with what we do to try and increase their tuition. They've seen a drop too. But we've, we've gotten, yeah, we're working on that too.
E T V, did you have more to add, sorry?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay.
It's, it's a, just a renewal of the agreement. We do very, something very similar and we've got to start as well.
Any initial, initialer discussion? I guess we've had some already. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the continuation of the joint agreement with MVET for ice cream service.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Action item number seven will require a resolution to consider approval of the non-renewal of probationary.
Yes, and we do try to do these earlier in the spring, but sometimes situation leads us to have it a little bit later. Situation with this one is that it didn't happen until almost the end of the school year, and so that's why it's coming to a little bit later than the others.
This is a resolution? Do I read the name? I think I read the name.
Do we have to do this?
Yes.
If she's a tier-one teacher, she loses her licensure June 30th. We can't hire a non-licensed individual?
I don't believe if she's a tier-one, she's a probationary.
Yeah, well, it says in the notice of non-renewal, and the resolution is a tier-one teacher.
Great. Is this just a...
I don't think that's correct.
On the recommendation of the probationary.
Yeah.
On the resolution, it says...
Yeah.
I'm guessing that a template was used for the resolution, it should say probationary. Thank you for catching that.
Yeah, it's in like three different spots, I think.
I will read the resolution into the record. And again, I read the name. Whereas Bailey Britton is a probationary teacher in Independent School District 508. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 508 that pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A dot 40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contract of Bailey Britton, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 508, is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2021-2022 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding non-renewal of her contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be substantially the following form, which is a letter, and it is listed there. And again, should be in the back in print there on page 142 of the packet.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So since, what's the reason for the non-renewal? Is it, because in the letter, it says that she can ask us to give her a reason, so.
Well, because she's probationary, we don't necessarily have to list a reason.
Okay, well, I just, because I've actually, maybe I've ever even asked about this, and it does say that they can request that the School Board give its reasons for the non-renewal, so I'll just...
Refer them to us.
Okay.
I'm trying to save face in public.
Understandable.
For the individual, not myself.
Then I guess I would ask you to advise your administrators not to write that we appreciate your service if we're gonna non-renew. See, I didn't think that was a problem, because I thought it was a...
Just, because I'm just a question person, though, like, obviously, we're voting yea to this, but is it fair to say, like, I don't really feel like I have, by just totally, you know what I mean? I don't really have the information needed? Is that fair to say that?
I can give a bit more. With this particular individual, we were working with the Teachers Union and with Education Minnesota through a process, and that process didn't have a good resolution. And so rather than provide tenure, because it would have been a tenure situation if she had another contract, it was in the district's best interest to non-renew rather than tenure.
Okay.
And I'm gonna assume that the required three evaluations were done during the year, and I thought that that was supposed to be, or at least as in the suggested template, that three evaluations were conducted.
In this particular situation, we were considering extending the probation period, as we've done with other individuals, and that wasn't...
That's not the recommendation you're bringing forward tonight?
Yes. It wasn't agreed upon.
Well, I've read the resolution into the record. Is there a motion to move the resolution?
I so moved. Second.
There's a motion to move the resolution and a second, further discussion?
I'm just, I'm really, I'm struggling here a little bit. But does it have to be a majority vote, or like everybody's vote?
It's a resolution, so we each vote, and then it's a majority. I don't think it has to be a...
You can choose to abstain if you'd like.
I think I might too.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be in...
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll move the resolution. Charlie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Tracy?
I abstain.
Ben, aye?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Great questions. Action item number eight. Consider approval of a yearly government lease. This too is a resolution. Mr. Rechner is here to tell you all about it.
We'll be, we'll be a lot quicker on this one, hopefully. This is something that we've done for a number of years, 10-plus. Basically, since I think it started with the one-to-one and the technology, we've typically leased that equipment and set it up over four to five years. We've gotten requests for proposals from the local banks. They've always done, been real competitive, again, this year. We got proposals from three of the local banks, with Pioneer Bank being the lowest. And that's what I'd recommend, that we do two leases for them for $267,000. One's four years, one's five years, to try and match the useful life of the... The one, four years is for the, when the kids get them in ninth grade through 12, so it's paid off by the time they graduate. And then this is the money, that $139,000 I was talking about, that's the money that pays these. That's the approximate amount of, you know, we have four or five leases going at all times over the years, and one rolls off and one replaces it. I think they originally started this with the, you know, that's when times were really tight. That's when the fund balance was, yeah, at two or three days. And we're kind of in it now. It'd be nice to quit doing this and pay for it out of cash, but at this point, with COVID again, you know, I thought we were there a couple of years ago, but, but we're not, with things changed. And again, the rates are a little bit higher than last year, but still 3.4 and 3.5 are pretty good rates. So I'd recommend that we, we do it with Pioneer Bank this year. And all the banks have been always great to work with, they each got a couple of them, so it always works out pretty good, so.
Yeah, we probably hit the timing on this.
Yeah.
Good on those rates.
We're a little bit late on this, we should have been about a month earlier, but it's not bad, it's, you know...
If it was today, it'd be different.
Yeah, yeah, it's better than it was, yeah, so. But, and again, like I said, the banks have all been real good to work with, and it's nice that they all get a couple of them, so.
So I have a question. It's called a yearly lease, but it's for four years and five years?
Yeah, it's really, it's, by more, by the annual government, we do it annually. So you'll see this, you know, we do it every May.
But this rate's good for all four years?
Yes, oh, yes, 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 four and five years, it's a fixed rate.
It's just the new ones coming on?
Right, yeah, like last year was probably, I think they're 1.7 and 1.8, and that's for the whole four years and five years. We, yeah, it's not a variable rate.
Okay, and then, at the end of the lease, who owns the...
We do, there's a buyout.
And then we have to dispose of it?
Yeah, sometimes it's not a good thing to own some of that at the end of five years, but it's not, you know, it's anybody's technology. But our tech department does a good job of, we actually do, you know, like the iPads, we get some decent money out of those at the end, they get refurbished, so, and you'll see that as far as when you see the disposition of obsolete equipment. You know, we do, we do get some funds back out of this, so.
This is a resolution, it is located on page 145 of your packet. I can read it, but you're not gonna like it. Essentially, this is an agreement for technology.
Yeah.
I move we approve the yearly governmental lease for Pioneer Bank.
You move the resolution?
I move the resolution.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Like I said, this is a resolution. Drew?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Ben, aye? Tracy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Thank you. Action item number nine. Approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of St. Peter Recreation and Leisure and the St. Peter Community and Community Education. Tammy Skinner?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
We have a really strong partnership with the Recreation and Leisure Services Department, and this memorandum of understanding really outlines the services that each of us will provide. And our charge is really to be able to maximize our funds and resources without duplicating services. Both of our organizations are really committed to eliminating barriers to participation, supporting academic achievement, providing positive recreational and social opportunities, and then also encouraging leadership. And one of the ways that we do that is by providing the Recreation Department with some funding to help offset some of the costs that are passed on to participants. One of the big programs is the Exploration Recreation Program. This program is located in local parks, and it provides free services for kids all throughout the summer. Last summer's attendance for the program was 2,064 children, and our funds helped decrease some of the costs for supplies and materials. Another program is the VIP program, which is the Volunteer in the Park program, and that fosters leadership skills in students. Last summer, we had 50 students who participated, and seven of those students elected to continue volunteering throughout the school year. Another program that we provide funds for is the After School Youth Enrichment, and that goes to offset some of the participant fees for things like early release day activities, fencing, flag football, traveling volleyball, and babysitter training. And during this previous school year, there were 845 students that participated in those kinds of programs. It's really great to be able to work with another organization that has the same guiding principles that we have, and to see the funds used well. One of the things, the funding that we provide them has not changed for the last 12 years, so it's been flat. And Joey Shugel and I, we really look at this document as we do our planning for all of our activities for the next year. It's really a guiding document for us. Their program is great, provides wonderful services, and I think that we're really fortunate to be able to have such a good working relationship with them. As you look at the memorandum of understanding, there have been no changes to this from the previous year. We still have the same statement of assurances for after-school funding. Guidelines for our youth programs are the same, and then the funding amounts are the same. Does anyone have any questions?
Is this kind of unique to St. Peter? And I'm not saying that, because I actually know the answer. I really don't know, I mean, like, how do other towns work their different classes? Are they kind of, do you know anything about that?
Well, you know what, St. Peter is unusual in that we have a Recreation Department and a Community Education Department. In a lot of communities, that's a combined organization. So it's great that we both work so well together, and we're not fighting each other for the same kids, for the same programs. You know, we are both committed to serving as many students as we can.
I know in my former, former role, there was a very similar agreement with the City Parks and Rec Department for shared programming.
So under that statement of assurances, when they're talking about all programs assigned to these funds will not be subject to non-resident fees, City of St. Peter, and then non-resident fees may be charged for non-residents of the St. Peter School District. So I'm assuming that means so, like, people from Minnesota and that they're outside, they get charged the same fees as residents of St. Peter?
Right, if they're part of our school district.
And then are there individuals that participate that are not residents of our school district?
For community ed classes, we do not charge any additional fees. I am not really sure about the Recreation Department. I know that was a policy a while ago, but I believe that may have changed.
Well, I could understand if we had, say, someone from Cleveland who worked in St. Peter and brought their kids for that, and that might be the case. I just wanted to make sure I understood...
Sure.
That wording.
Any further questions?
I move we approve the MOA, well, MOU, sorry, between the City of St. Peter Recreation and St. Peter Community and Family.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I would just like to commend this interaction between the city and the community education, because this is, this is a really good service to the entire community. And with your budget being what it has been, and the prices haven't gone up, I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you so much, Tim.
Thank you.
I will call the motion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next action item is a resolution as well. Consider membership in the Minnesota State High School League for '22-'23.
Yes, this is an action that you take each year to ensure that we can continue to be a part of the Minnesota State High School League. I remember last year at about this time, we were having this conversation, and it was a little, it was a little rocky between the High School League and many of the school districts based on the fee structures. They've made some changes to that since that time, and we are recommending approval of the application. I know that there was some question about the representation on there, and we can change those as, as directed by the School Board Chair at a later time.
Any initial discussion? If there's a motion to move the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to move the resolution? Any further discussion? I guess I can, I'll read the first part of the resolution into the record. Resolve that the governing board of the St. Peter High School, County of Nicolet, State of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine art events referred to in Minnesota Statutes 128C dot 01 to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the high school listed below, St. Peter High School, is authorized by the governing board of said school district to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved interschool activities... and participate in the approved interschool activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions, so. And it does go on from there on page one fifty-two. Uh, with that, I will call the resolution. Drew?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Ben? Aye. Tracy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Our last action item, uh, of the evening is to consider approval of individual contracts. Yes, um, we have five contracts coming to you tonight. Uh, the first is the Operations and Maintenance Supervisor. This is following Mr. Bachman's retirement. Uh, we are looking forward to welcoming Ms. Sharon Peterson in that position. The District Technology Director, you might remember that we held interviews earlier in the school year and did not end up filling that position. We recently did interviews again, and Gus Sorbo, um, has been chosen as, uh, the Director of Technology for the district. We're excited to have him stepping into that new role after serving as interim. Food Service Director is a new position, following our decision to go to self-operations for our food service, and Emily Craig, who has been serving as Director through Aviance, has, uh, taken on that role. We are really excited to have her on board, and, you know, she's been handling all the summer food already and is working on transitioning us to that self-operations model by pursuing contracts and all that, so we're excited to have that contract in front of you tonight. Um, we're also doing a market adjustment with our Mars Accountants. Uh, you may have heard us speaking about EdFi, which is a new program that the state is using, and it has been a tremendous amount of new work for Chris to enter all of that. Side note, spoiler, the state ran a test run of, with the new software, and it is a complete mess, and they need to now go back and figure out how everyone needs to do this all over again, so. Um, I just wanted to recognize that, uh, Chris has been doing a lot of work on this, and in looking at her contract in comparison to similar roles across the state, she was quite low, and so we made a market adjustment, um, because the last thing we'd wanna do right now is lose her. She's the only one that knows what's going on with EdFi at this point. Um, and then our Community Outreach Coordinator, uh, that is Heather. Heather has been, um, very busy lately, working on our website transition, and she's really taken the lead, along with Gus, on doing all of that. Little, um, in the fall, early fall, we'll be adding a district app, and Heather will also be in charge of that. She's also developing this big, um, free and reduced price lunch application campaign and enrollment campaign, and, uh, she's been pretty busy helping us with, uh, a lot of promotional things with the district, so. Uh, we are extending that contract for another year, and we will, um, we'll have some good things come out of that, make some decisions on that later on. Any initial...
Chair Leonard, uh, members of the School Board. Uh, the HR Committee did review all these contracts, and so I am, will make a motion to accept, uh, the five individual contracts as written.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That is the end of our action items. Uh, we have one information item before reports, and that is the first reading of revisions to the policy manual, which is, uh, an evergreen, uh, information. Right. Uh, yes, we have quite a few policies coming to you for a first reading. Um, I think there's like thirteen of them, and this would be, uh, the end of the seven hundreds, eight hundreds, and nine hundreds. And, uh, we had quite a lot of fun going over these at the Policy Committee. I think it's kind of fun, anyway. And looking forward to next time, getting together with principals and going over the five hundreds and six hundreds. Drew?
I...
Do you have anything to add to that, Policy Committee?
No, and we're open to feedback and suggestions and thoughts, so please reach out to any of us.
Read through them and let us know.
Yep.
Y'all have a different definition of fun than I do.
Uh, you were on that committee for a while.
I'm just saying.
Great, thank you. Reports.
Finally, my turn. Um, so there's actually a lot happening this summer in the schools. Um, this week or last week, uh, St. Peter had twenty-eight of the two hundred and twenty-five participants at the Minnesota Education Partnership Summit Institute. Um, it was held at Wasika High School, and the focus was on educators' mental health. And, um, it was led by Dr. Sandra Campoff. Um, at the beginning of June, we had several departments going through curriculum review, um, ELL, science, special education, art, and music. So several teachers on sites working on those things. Um, Read-In Feed is in their fourth week, and has had an average attendance of ninety-five per day for breakfast and around two hundred for lunch, and that includes lunches that are being delivered to the high school for summer school, um, which has been awesome for our high school kids. Um, Early Childhood Special Education Summer Programming started today. There are thirty-two students attending a three-week program. For South and North, Summer Stars Academy and the Extended School Year begins next Monday. It's all going to be housed at North Elementary. Students will attend four hours per day, four hours a week, or four, excuse me, four hours per day, four days per week, um, through July twenty-eighth. Um, the middle school is following that same schedule. They have ELL, special education, and targeted services, and the middle school is also working to fill some teaching positions and a social work position. With the high school, Scott Robinson recently wrote and received a future-ready CTE, um, grant. So he received twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's going to be used to upgrade equipment in the woodshop. So that's very exciting, that's a growing program, as you know. Uh, the St. Peter Hall of Fame Brunch and Induction Ceremony will be held at the high school Saturday, July second, at ten a.m. Tickets are available through Sandy Clemmison for anyone interested in attending, and that's a very fancy event. Uh, and then with much excitement and fanfare, the Fall Musical was finally announced at the Theater Banquet. Uh, the students will be performing Shrek the Musical in November, which is so exciting.
I think it'll try out.
Good idea, good idea. Uh, we're halfway through summer credit recovery at the high school. We have two, two-week sessions, so last Friday, we wrapped up session one. We had about a hundred student, a hundred students enroll, about seventy-five finished classes successfully. Um, the remaining students are continuing, so we don't say that you fail summer school, you're just not done yet. So we've got about eighty students that are enrolled for session two, some are carried over. Um, so that's also exciting. And then summer school is also happening at the Huffman Learning Center. We do a short eighteen-day summer school for any students. We're required to do that for any students that are behind in grade level for reading or math, which is our students, our general student population out there. So they are wrapping up, um, June twenty-fourth, so lots going on in the schools in this very hot weather, so. That's all I have, yeah.
All right. Yeah, go for it. Uh, as you heard, we have a lot going on, and none of that would be possible if we didn't have staff members and administrators stepping up to, to, to do that, to continue working in the summer, and so we are very thankful that we have so many people who continue to work with our students. I also wanted to mention, uh, we've had lots of conversations over the last few months about the free lunches and breakfasts are ending, but in the summer, they're still, they're still free of charge. So, uh, if people come for breakfast or for lunch, there is no charge for that. And it's, anyone eighteen and under?
One to eighteen.
One to eighteen.
An adult's gonna purchase a meal, no problem there. But you would actually still put a food on there.
So, do you know the charge for adult meal off the top of your head?
Uh, I don't, I hate to say it, it's two, you know, four something.
Four something, yeah.
So through eighteen or to eighteen?
Pardon me?
Through the age eighteen, like, so it's there eighteen?
You can eat eighteen, and, yeah, it's one to eighteen.
Card the one-year-olds.
You have to admit that might be a practice, at least now that it's been written.
You look like you might be eleven months.
Need to see a birth certificate before we're gonna give you your nat, Joe.
And starting with the fun fact about that is that if we serve under one, we'd need to provide formula.
That's kind of funny right now, isn't it?
Yeah, they say one eighteen, but...
All right. Well, it's wonderful to hear that so many people are utilizing our breakfast and lunch in the summer, and I'm sure we'll have many, many more. You may have noticed that the parking lot, uh, to Early Childhood and the District Office is, is a little messy right now, might be missing, uh, and the sidewalks are out. They'll be continuing that project, and we hope to have that done, um, in, in the coming weeks. I also wanted to note that they are going to start construction, the city's gonna start construction on Broadway, um, putting in a roundabout at Broadway and Sunrise. And so, um, people will not be able to access this side from above, so there may become more parking and traffic on, on Drew's side of the middle school. Um, and so just be mindful of that, and be watching for students and pedestrians who might be trying to avoid construction as well as you're, as you're traveling around the middle school this summer and in the fall, so.
And they'll have that roundabout done by the time school starts?
Nope, unfortunately, it will not be. So that is something that we'll be planning for, um, probably for the first month or so of, of school.
I'm sure Gus Davis won't mind the buses going through campus.
No, I'm sure. So we will have to be rerouting buses and, and, you know, the parent drop-off piece might get a little messy if they're coming in and out.
Yikes.
Yeah. So anyway, something to look forward to as they, uh, finish that up. When will they have, uh, official detour? Will there be maps that we can post on our new website? Yeah, we'll, we'll have to plan some official rerouting of traffic and drop-off loops, but...
Oh, my goodness.
Um, they were hoping to have that finished before, but with supply chain issues, uh, construction is starting a little later than they had hoped, but... If anybody's interested in, uh, applying for crossing guard positions, um...
They did raise the amount you can earn, too.
We have a nice vest you can wear. All right. And then I was also gonna mention the, the Hall of Fame and, uh, reunion coming up in July. If, that's over the Fourth of July weekend. Love to see you all there. It sounds gonna be a great celebration because it's two cycles worth, so there are eleven nominees, um, coming into the Hall of Fame, and that'll be a fun event. And that's on the third... Second.
Second. Ten? Yes. The morning?
Saturday morning, Saturday, July second, yep.
I just posted other information.
Very good. And that is all I have. Thank you. Any questions? Board members around the table, Charlie? Tim?
I got enough.
Tracy?
I just wanna say hats off to all the students who did credit recovery. Um, that's not fun to do in the summer, but you did it, and you're done, and you're that much closer to the end, so. Sometimes you just have to do stuff you don't really wanna do, so.
Good lessons for adulthood.
It is.
Thank you. Uh, thanks to those who've returned the Superintendent Annual Evaluation forms so far. Um, everyone should have that, uh, as well as Superintendent Grant says, self-reflection, and we will discuss, uh, that evaluation at a special meeting, uh, on June twenty-seventh, which is next Monday at five p.m., and that's in the middle school, um, library, uh, Media Center. And, uh, we will also include the twenty-two, twenty-three goals in that discussion, so.
I would like to commend the Native American Parent Advisory Committee for the first Eagle Feather Ceremony. There was a lot of administration there, and, and John Graff, you've done a great job working with that organization, and they did a, a very nice job. And there was also a Star Quilt presentation to Angelina Moss. Um, the Advisory Board is really in full action planning for the next year to fully, um, support the, our, um, Native American students in everything they do throughout the school. And then I'd also like to make a, a congratulatory statement about the Juneteenth celebration at the, at the high school this last Saturday. That was very, very nice, the weather, you know, is what the weather is now, but that was a very honorable, honoring kind of a, um, of an, of an opportunity for the community, so.
Thank you.
Well...
I have a question that I'd like to give to you, Superintendent Grunseth, about tax increment financing.
Okay.
I read the article in Free Press today, otherwise I would've given this to you, and I don't expect an answer today, so. They said that, like, when the city issues tax increment financing bonds, that not only the city, but the county and the school district lose the property taxes from that entity.
That's true.
And I was just wondering, do we have any idea how much of that is happening here in St. Peter? And what the cost is, and is maybe that's something we can put on the agenda for our next combined meeting?
Yeah, I, I don't have a total number. We do get notification of when that is being considered, and there are hearings that we are invited to provide input on those, um, and it's a property by property basis. But, um, yeah, we can, we can get you more information about what, what currently is in play, and, uh, can certainly suggest that for your next meeting. I know that there's a subcommittee meeting being scheduled for, it would be the Shared Programs Committee of the Board, meeting with their subcommittee to talk about, uh, what the next agenda would look like, so I can make that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Drew?
I'll agree.
All right, thank you. Uh, upcoming meetings of the School Board, uh, like I said, that special board meeting in the Middle School Media Center, five p.m. on June twenty-seventh. A Policy Committee, Wednesday, June twenty-ninth, at seven a.m. in the District Office. A study session with Longview Education, um, Monday, July eleventh, at six-thirty p.m. in the Middle School Media Center. Education Committee, uh, July twelfth, Tuesday, one p.m. in the Middle School Conference Room. Uh, Business Committee, Wednesday, July thirteenth, uh, at four p.m. in the Middle School Conference Room. And Policy Committee, Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, at four p.m. in the District Office. And with that, uh, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you. Now I can assign some things and give them back to you.
I'm so excited to be here.